I call the order, the Town of Ethics Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Start, do we have any agenda additions or changes to the agenda as worn additions or change the agenda as worn from my PC people? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. I'm gonna give it, I'm gonna give it to Ian in a second, if you have a shoe, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Close. And I controversy, eyes have it seventy nothing, the agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is public to be heard, these are specifically comments or items that are not already on the agenda. And so this is your time, one thing worth noting is the presentation in the PC DRB discussion could be a little, a little lengthy and involved. So please bear that in mind with the link of your comment, although I only see four people here, so we should do it. Okay, funny, any public comment on items that are not already on the agenda? See nothing online? Nothing in the room? Hearing none, I'll move us to approval of minutes, so I have a motion on the minutes.
So.
Moved by Paula.
Second.
Seconded by Ian, and what do we have here on the minutes, everybody? New format and everything.
I didn't actually get them. I stopped to get them.
Anything from anyone else?
Love the new timelines.
That's what I say, I like the new format.
Yeah, the timestamps are great.
Yep.
Before it does, I'm just gonna abstain from this because I wasn't participating and watching minutes or anything like that, or any video.
In which case, there's no further discussion on the minutes. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any notes? Motion passes one, two, three, four, five, and six to zero with one extension. So now we're on to business items, our first business item this evening is the presentation of the Sand Hill Rock, Sand Hill Road Truck Traffic Study. It can say that five times fact, now who do we have for us?
Just start us hours.
Please.
On this, um, so the Lower Sand Hill Road Truck Traffic Study, um, received funding, um, Regional Planning Commission, in the beginning of twenty four, in the spring of twenty four, the project started about a year ago in earnest, collected, um, some initial data and comment from the public at its first public meeting last spring, to collect more information, and this is the second meeting then to take what we've heard, reflect it back to the community, see how that is, get other comments, and then use that to create the final, um, report. Um, the study is looking, um, at the truck traffic, um, and to some degree other traffic in the second industrial park area, and then the Lower Sand Hill Road area, and then some additional, um, spaces around there. So this project has been managed by the Regional Planning Commission, the end town staff, and the consultant has been Stantec. And John is here to event the Stantec, I'll get your, um, slides ready unless anybody else has anything they wanna say before we get started, and I say Lani's on the line here too from the Regional Planning Commission, otherwise I'll get these slides up and let me take it away. Seeing anybody who's up here.
While you're getting the record on, uh, just like the, thank the planning commission for the opportunity to present and also thank Ken and Aaron.
Could you speak up a little bit, please?
Sure, uh, as, as Ken's getting the slides going, I'd just like to thank, uh, the planning commission for having me, uh, present today. Um, and also like to thank, uh, Ken and Aaron for their support on the project, as well as Si Sir Polly, and, uh, Lani Churchill from the Chinatown County Regional Planning Commission, uh, for all their support, uh, during this project. I'm Sean Neely, I'm the project manager from Stantec, uh, and look forward to giving you some updates on this project. So I think many of us are, are familiar with this area. We're moving on to the next slide here.
Give him a second.
Yeah, so, um, what I like to cover is, you know, a little bit about the project area and the context of the study, review some of the highlights from public input that has been received, uh, both in person, by email, um, and, uh, make and, and then, uh, address recommendations specific to address the public concerns that, um, that we are aware of. Next, we'll move into, uh, describing, um, the, the overall network conditions, roadway network conditions of the study area, and the analysis that went into, uh, looking at those conditions for, uh, existing and future conditions. Then we'll talk about recommendations, uh, for improvements to the overall roadway network. And then we'll open it up, uh, for any questions, uh, comments, um, discussion before talking about, uh, next steps of the study after tonight. Uh, so now moving on to project area and context, um, on our next slide, we'll have, um, an overview. This is showing, uh, the study area, um, so we had the Saxon Hill Industrial Park, uh, represented, um, different parts of it in, uh, different colors, um, so of course it's, uh, border to the west by Sand Hill Road, with Allen Martin Drive running through it, uh, Thompson Drive and, um, Corporate Drive, uh, within the ship. Um, and then, uh, Vermont fifteen, uh, to the north, and Vermont, uh, one seventeen, uh, River Road to the south. So we see some gray parcels, those have already been developed. Uh, the yellow parcels are, uh, zone industrial, um, and they have been permitted for development. And the orange parcels are industrial, not yet permitted. The, the pink, um, uh, polygon in the middle is, uh, the sand extraction area, um, that is, uh, an operation expected to go about ten years, and then that portion and, um, the, the parcel that it's, uh, within there, is going to be, uh, reverted back to the town, um, for inclusion with the, uh, conservation recreation, uh, land use, that's, uh, that's adjacent and surrounding it. We also have on the map, hard to tell, but, um, some of the mountain bike trails there. And then we have some of the specific, uh, developments called out, so, uh, dashed blue line represents the boundary of Allen Brook Development, with, uh, the solid blue line showing, uh, proposed five lot subdivision parcel of that Allen Brook Development. And then the, uh, the orange, uh, pink dash line represents the boundary of Black Bay Ventures parcels, and the solid red line represents Black Bay Ventures' proposed building parcel. So this, you know, uh, you know, encapsulates, um, this, the current status, uh, that we understand, um, uh, for the parcels within the ship. We also have identified on there, uh, Chemo Drive, so, uh, for the parcels, um, particularly the five lot subdivision, um, as part of the Allen Brook Development, um, would be accessed by, uh, what would be known as Chemo Drive from one seventeen. Currently, it is a dirt road, uh, that accesses a couple of residential properties, um, and goes up to a gate, uh, before it gets to the solar farm, uh, just south of the ship. Currently, it goes into a dirt road that then skirts the, um, easterly side of the ship and, uh, connects to Saxon Hill Road. But, uh, so those, um, portions of the ship, uh, on the southern side are part of Phase Two, Ship Phase Two Development, and then Ship Phase Three would include connecting that Chemo Drive northerly to the end of Thompson Drive, uh, to provide a route, um, through the ship. So this is the overall, um, status, um, uh, and our understanding of, uh, the development and some of the upcoming development, um, in the ship at this time.
Just those of you who are wondering why we haven't let that incident in, we have, it's just his joining, so we have not overlooked that that person is trying to get in.
I, I'm sure I couldn't hear that.
Oh, that, just, I just wanted to point out that, um, MJSS is integrating room, I admitted them, they, for some reason, that they're not joining, but I've done my part, or we've done our part.
You haven't left them, thank you.
Yes.
So some of the goals of the study, um, want to integrate the public input, um, analyze truck traffic for commercial and industrial, uh, land uses, both for existing conditions and the future. We went out a timeline of ten years for full buildout conditions within the ship. And then identify safety issues, as well as any roadway network deficiencies, and develop recommendations. Uh, now we'd like to highlight some of the, uh, the big themes from the public input that we have received. We hear that it is too loud from trucks, noise has been getting worse over the years, particularly, uh, engine noise as trucks are going uphill on Sand Hill Road and, uh, engine brakes, um, uh, and their use going downhill. You know, of course, uh, their use for safety, but they, they are loud. Air pollution, including, uh, particulate dust, as well as diesel exhaust fumes, complaints that the ground shakes when trucks drive by, even, uh, within some people's homes. Comments about, uh, particular seg- segment of sidewalk along Sand Hill Road that, uh, lacks a, uh, a grass buffer, and so it's directly adjacent to the roadway, um, leading, uh, pedestrians to feel uncomfortable and, uh, concerned for safety. There are calls to create a new truck route, um, going from Vermont one seventeen to Thompson Drive, as well as to consider truck routes from Vermont two eighty nine to Vermont fifteen to Allen Martin Drive. Comments all around that just too many trucks in general along, uh, Lower Sand Hill Road, as well as, uh, requests to incorporate separated bike lanes, um, along the roadway. And so now, uh, I'd like to review recommendations to address public concerns. And we'll start with, uh, the number one primary recommendation from this study is to pursue the construction of a Chemo Drive connection that runs from Vermont one seventeen River Road, uh, through the ship, connecting with Thompson Drive, uh, and then to designate that route as, uh, the designated truck route for, um, trucks, uh, associated with the trip, with the ship to use. That would remove the trucks that are currently, um, accessing the ship by way of Sand Hill Road, away from Sand Hill Road. And that recommendation, you know, that action, that improvement, um, would be the greatest improvement to address public concerns. In order to pursue that, um, and, and, you know, some other support for that, uh, not only to remove, uh, truck traffic, it, I, it addresses, um, and, and receives community and resident, uh, support, it also has support from the fire department. And although there are exceptions that can be made, um, there is a town ordinance that, um, for a maximum length of dead end roads to be nine hundred feet. So this would be a, a project that would involve coordination between the town and a developer. The timeline could vary, it could be a longer term project, um, but it could happen sooner, it depends on really finding a developer that is interested in developing particularly some of those southern, uh, portions of the ship, and that would be, uh, capable and, um, willing to construct a roadway as a condition for their development. And so if that's able to happen, then that would really, um, you know, be the best way to get trucks off of Sand Hill Road and away from, uh, residential properties. Here, we're looking at a portion of Sand Hill Road, um, just south of the intersection with Allen Martin Drive. This figure is oriented with north pointing to the right hand side of the page. We're right at the intersection with Margaret Street, and so this section of sidewalk, um, likely because the right of way is, is much narrower here than it is along other portions of the roadway, uh, the sidewalk, uh, goes right up against the roadway. Um, and so it leads to pedestrians, um, folks with strollers, mobility devices, uh, kids on bicycles, to feel, uh, uncomfortable and then concerned, you know, um, traveling, um, adjacent to, uh, large trucks traveling by. So the existing roadway is thirty feet wide, and so one option would be to leave the sidewalk where it is and push the curb in, creating a five foot grass buffer, which would reduce the overall roadway width into, in order to provide eleven foot travel lanes with one foot shoulders through this short segment. Um, and so that is, uh, you know, one, one option, um, to, to address that concern. Moving on to, to the next slide, um, you know, we are, uh, we're trying to coordinate with the ongoing active transportation plan that the town is undertaking, and taking, you know, their, uh, recommendations, um, which, you know, match up with some of what we're hearing in terms of a desire for on-road, uh, bicycle facilities. And so looking at these figures, um, we can see that, um, Sand Hill Road is, uh, you know, about in the middle there, and then Allen Martin Drive goes off to the, the northeast, and so when we were on the prior sl- slide, should be looking at the, um, the sidewalk area, that's just south of that intersection, thanks Kent, with Allen Martin Drive. Now, um, so far, you know, the ATP, the Active Transportation Plan, is proposing a basic bike network, um, starting just south of that intersection and going down Sand Hill Road, uh, to one seventeen, uh, in, including a consideration of bike lanes. And so they're also, um, I'll mention on the, the bottom portion of the page, they're also looking at proposing, um, and promoting alternate bike routes, um, that are essentially more or less parallel to Sand Hill Road, but use lower volume, lower speed, um, residential streets, um, to travel by bicycle, um, and, and avoid Sand Hill Road. Now, in terms of the relationship between the recommendation we made on the previous slide, and, and recommendations here for on-road bike lanes, you know, they could be, they could, uh, be coordinated in different ways. You could have on-road bike lanes immediately south of the area that we were just looking at on the previous slide. And if we want to just quickly go back to that previous slide, um, we could, um, make this more of a, a traffic calming zone, um, with the narrow, uh, lanes, possibly, uh, a speed hump, but using, uh, shared lane markings, also known as sharrows, to indicate to drivers and cyclists that they can take the lane in this area. So that's one option, another option would be to try out, um, putting on-road bike lanes along the length of Sand Hill Road, um, and seeing how well that serves to provide some buffer from the sidewalk at this location, you know, with, uh, the location of that adjacent, um, uh, excuse me, uh, bike lane. You know, so that's, that's one op-, so you have a couple of different options there, um, but if you tried out, you know, the one, and pedestrians were still feeling like, eh, could use some more protection, then you could bump it up, um, to these improvements here. Now we'll move into more of the overall network, um, analysis, um, so I'll do a, a broad overview of the steps. I won't get into, um, many of the details, because there, there are quite a lot of details. But essentially, you know, after documenting public input, uh, reviewing existing plans and studies, including, uh, several, uh, plans for development and traffic impact studies associated with those plans, we analyze the existing and future conditions of the roadway network in the study area. So we looked at not only trucks, but also passenger vehicle volumes, um, the CCRPC put out, um, special roadway cameras that collect and classify vehicles at the key intersections within the study area. And then, uh, we, um, use a process called trip generation, where we estimate the number of trips for both trucks and passenger vehicles that would be associated with each of the parcels within the ship. And so we did that for future parcels, but we also did it for existing parcels to, um, uh, to check in how it compares with, you know, um, the existing parcels, to make sure that our methodology was sound. Then we took those numbers from each of the parcels and we distributed them throughout the network based on the current ratio of turning movements, um, that we're observing through the network. And based on that, we assessed each of the intersections, uh, doing capacity analysis, um, to see how well they're performing, um, under current conditions, as well as future conditions in two thousand and thirty five. For those intersections that had, uh, some, some poor operating conditions, you know, moving into the future, we, um, analyzed them to see if they would, um, pass the, the warrant to place a new traffic signal at any of those locations. After the analysis, we identified any safety issues, as well as roadway deficiencies, and we used that to inform the development of recommendations, and then we evaluated those recommendations. So here, um, we're looking at, on the left-hand side, we see, um, the different classifications of vehicles. So there are, uh, thirteen classes of vehicles shown here, that's consistent between, um, uh, the classifications used by V-Trans, Vermont Agency of Transportation, as well as the Federal Highway Administration, FHWA. And so for the purposes of this study, we identified classes seven through eleven as the trucks of concern, um, that are associated with the commercial industrial activities within the ship. We collected, our CCRPC collected data, um, turning movement counts at, um, at the intersections of interest for twelve hour periods from six AM to six PM. We also had some existing data from, uh, V-Trans for, uh, Vermont one seventeen and Sand Hill Road. And, uh, and so this just represents some of those, um, uh, you know, twelve hour, uh, counts, um, for, for trucks at that time. Here we have a distribution of truck traffic throughout the day, um, at the different intersections. So it looks a little bit noisy, but, um, wanted to just point out that at the bottom, you see four different intersections that, um, that are part of the study, and then each of those, we see, uh, a line associated with, um, the distribution of those trips throughout the day. So what I want to highlight here is that the, the truck trips throughout the day don't match the same peak periods of the morning and the evening, um, travel peaks that we see, you know, for, for passenger vehicles, mostly associated with commute, uh, commuting times going to and from work. But we do kind of see two, two general peaks, so one broad peak, you know, goes from about eight thirty in the morning to about eleven thirty in the morning, and then a smaller peak runs from about one o'clock in the afternoon to, uh, three or three thirty in the afternoon. And here we have what we refer to as a balanced existing network.
The legend you need?
No, the, I mean, where does it identify which color represents which?
That's about right here.
For that.
Oh, I see it, okay, okay, I don't know, my glasses aren't.
So after collecting all of the counts, uh, we prepared a network, um, and we balanced that network, um, to, you know, to, uh, basically make it, to prepare it for analysis, um, looking at, you know, do the, the counts that we're looking at, um, from different intersections, do they match up, do they make sense? And so we, you know, uh, prepared this, and this represents the existing network for morning and evening trips, evening trips are represented in parentheses, and so these are for the morning peak period and the evening peak period, um, for total traffic, including passenger vehicles, as well as trucks.
And your evening peak period is that one thirty to three thirty time slot?
That is later, no, that is associated with the peak period of, um, of your normal network peak period. So I believe it was more like, uh, sometime between four PM and six PM. Um, and so, let's see, uh, here we have, um, total truck value percentage increase in the, in the morning and in the evening peak hours, from existing conditions in two thousand and twenty four to future buildout conditions in two thousand and thirty five. Bit hard to read from the screen, um, easier to read if you have it in front of you, um, but it shows a, a range of, um, percentage differences. Some are quite low, like over on Corporate Drive, where, um, most of those parcels have already been fully developed. And so we're not expecting a large increase in traffic over the next ten years for that por- portion of the ship. However, Thompson Drive, that's where there's a lot more potential future development. And so we see, uh, greater percentage change over time. Now down at Chemo Drive, we don't have a percentage change, because currently there's no traffic associated with the, the ship development, but of course, that will, uh, increase with time. Here, uh, is just a, a quick slide showing total truck trips, um, uh, during the AM and PM peak hours. And, you know, it shows that, uh, trucks, um, associated with the ship are not allowed, uh, to use Upper Sand Hill Road. But what this really illustrates is again, that the, um, the, the distribution of truck trips throughout the day doesn't really match the same peak morning and peak evening periods of, um, our normal, uh, traffic patterns. Whereas the tru-, you know, the truck distribution is more constant throughout the course of the day. So there's quite a lot of trucks coming through here, but they're not all concentrated in the same morning and evening peak period as the commuter traffic is. So here, I'll, I'll talk through this. This shows some of the capacity analysis for three intersections in particular, identified at the top of the, the table here. So we've got Vermont 15 and Sand Hill Road, Vermont 15 and Allen Martin Drive, and Allen Martin Drive and Thompson Drive. And then on the left-hand side, we see different scenarios. So we see existing conditions from 2024, future conditions, assuming that there is no additional ship development. Then we look at future conditions with full ship build-out. Then we have those same future full ship build-out conditions, but with improvements that we'll review on following slides. And lastly, future full ship build-out conditions with said improvements, as well as the Kimo Drive connection. So I'll just point out a few things on this slide. For Vermont 15, Sand Hill Road, as many of you are familiar with right now, there's pretty long delays for the northbound left turn. Over a couple of minutes, you know, even up to three minutes, right? However, there are plans for that intersection to be reconfigured and signalized in 2028. That's a V-Trans project. And so that's why, under the, the other future conditions, the delay is much reduced for that intersection.
I believe it. When I see it. It's been every year now for several years.
Fair enough.
2015, I think, was a big number for a long time. Yeah. Then 2019 and.
There you go. Well, let's see how it goes. That's the plan. That's, that's the information I'm given. Moving on to Vermont 15 and Allen Martin Drive. That one, as, as you may be familiar with, also has a long delay for that northbound left turn on to Vermont 15, particularly in the evening period with over a minute of delay. With, you know, even if there's no ship development in the future, just with background traffic increases, those, you know, would degrade further. So in the evening, you would be, you know, over two minutes of delay. With full ship build-out, you know, you're, you're getting, you're getting a long line there and, and it's not, not a great condition. However, with putting in a signal there, as, as development increases with the ship, that intersection would improve and the delays would be drastically reduced. And so we'll review that in a future slide. And then lastly, on this slide, for Allen Martin Drive and Thompson Drive, which is the stop control T-intersection. Right now, it's, it's in decent shape operationally. But with the future full build-out of the ship in the evening period, the westbound left turn lane would, would receive, you know, substantial delay. And we have an improvement that will, will help reduce that delay that we'll review together. And so now we'll move on to those recommendations. First, we have that intersection reconfiguration and signalization for Vermont 15 and Sand Hill Road. Right now, we've got it marked down at 2028. You know, if we come back in a few years, we'll see, see how it's doing. Next up, Vermont 15 and Allen Martin Drive. This is the, the existing condition. And it's that left turn on to Vermont 15 that is providing, you know, the, the delay or will, will be worsening over time. There was a study done specifically for this intersection. You may be familiar with a couple of years back that recommended a signal contingent upon development occurring within the ship. And so based on the traffic capacity analysis, we did conduct a warrants analysis, a signal warrants analysis. And this did meet the minimum criteria for the placement of a signal. And so as volumes increase over time, then the recommendation would be to signalize this. As you see on, on this slide. So that would also be a state project as, as Vermont 15 is a state roadway and, and would be, you know, a long-term project, at least five years out or, or longer.
I have a question. It looks like that intersection is big enough to do a rotary. Was that ever considered?
That's a good question. We didn't look at that specifically in this study. And I don't recall that being an alternative in, in the previous scoping study. But I'm personally a big fan of roundabouts. And, you know, I, I think that, that's something that could be considered there.
That way you wouldn't have to stop and go.
That's right. You wouldn't have to stop and go. You wouldn't have the same queues. You have continuous travel. And it's also much safer. It really reduces a lot of the conflict points with the left-hand turns and drastically reduces not only the, the frequency of crashes, but the severity of crashes compared to putting in a traffic. Now looking at Allen Martin Drive and Thompson Drive, we have a couple of things going on here. So this is the existing conditions. We see that there are existing sidewalks along Allen Martin Drive, as well as Thompson Drive. But currently, there's no marked crosswalk. So a short-term fix could be to get some paint out there and provide a marked crosswalk. That would help to notify, indicate to motorists that they can expect pedestrians to be crossing there and also provide some comfort for pedestrians as they're making that cross. In addition, this was an intersection where we saw that the left turn maneuver degrades over time. And so it could be considered for a little bit of widening in order to accommodate two turn lanes as, as ship development continues and, and delay increases. And that could be a town project, could be, you know, in the medium term. But it's also something to keep an eye on, the rate of development and, and how quickly that traffic is increasing. And finally, we recommend that in 10 years, in 2035, you have a follow-up study to monitor conditions, basically conduct another traffic study to compare what the actual traffic volumes are in 2035 with the, the forecast from this study. And if traffic volumes are quite a bit higher than are forecasted and there are impacts seen that are not identified here, then some additional mitigation measures could be considered at that time. And that could be a town project partnered with Tinian County Regional Plan Commission, similar to this one. And it would be a long-term project as it's 10 years out.
How, how typical is, is 10 years the standard or is five years?
So that's a good question. So we, you know, we, we consider what, you know, we would use as the time horizon for this study. And just looking at the rate of development, looking at, you know, what's been developed and, and how long it might take to get towards full, full build-out, we chose 10 years as the, as the time horizon for, for the conditions of this study.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And here we just have a results table. I'm not going to read through all of it. It's basically, it, it's helpful if you want to refer back to any of the conditions or recommendations or issues that are, were identified during this presentation. And it has a slide number on the left-hand side for reference. And then it provides a location, the deficiencies identified, and the potential improvements to be considered. And with that, we'd like to, I'd like to open it up for any questions, answers, and, and comments. We want to go back one slide, maybe, just to kind of have this as a reference point. If people find it helpful to, you know, have a map in front of them as they're raising questions or comments.
Commissioners?
Yeah, I mean, this, I, I don't know if it's, if it's even relevant doing this discussion. But it seems to me that there are really two kinds of bicycles. There are the traveling bicycles and there are kids on bicycles. And the needs of one are different from the needs of another, especially with the other kids. Do you accommodate those differences in your plans at all? Or how, how does one deal with that?
Sure. So that's a great question and, and comment. And so the recommendations that we made for adding the buffer, the brass buffer for the sidewalk, that's really addressing more of the, the younger riders that are, you know, more accustomed to riding on the sidewalk. Whereas some of the recommendations coming, you know, that, the recommendations that I identified here that are coming from the ongoing active transportation plan, kind of identify both. On the one hand, you know, for like, providing on-road bike lanes along Sand Hill Road, those are for more of your, your traveling cyclists, you know, a little more competent. However, there are other recommendations of identifying alternate routes through lower-volume residential streets. You know, that could be supportive of some of those younger riders. You know, if those neighborhoods are low enough in volume and, you know, the routes, routes are chosen so that they're comfortable enough for, for the younger riders.
I think the key is really making sure both systems work. You know, you want to have a, a street system that works for people walking and biking along it. But it's also.
You need to consider that, that there are going to be younger children on bicycles on the sidewalks.
Well. I mean, the streets themselves should be, should be adequate so that people can walk and they can bike along the streets. But then as, as in addition to that, it's great when you have an opportunity of having something that's higher comfort, set away from the road a little bit further, makes connections on quieter streets. And it gives people a, a chance to learn the cycling skills that they need to, have a little bit of break from the traffic. But a lot of the demonstrations are on the busy streets. So, but I think here in Essex, we have a really great opportunity of using the kind of both directions and having them meshed together really well. So that's what the Active Transportation Plan is really trying to do, is to try to have kind of a basic bike network that's using the on-street facilities to make the more direct connections and making sure that we have just a suitable, basic network for everybody. And then really looking for those other opportunities to connect within neighborhoods, make connections across on the quieter areas too.
Well, but especially, especially in the Sand Hill Road area where you're, you've got the schools.
I, I would actually say that, that bothers me, the way that was just presented. Again, given the proximity to the schools, I would not want us to engage and have bicycle transportation on the roadway. Period. Because kids are going to go, unless you say you're, you're, you're a kid, you can't ride in that bike lane. I've seen too many kids riding on the bikes, going to and from the schools. And they're elementary. They're not, they're not high school. They're not college. It's, it's not an age group that has a lot of.
Roll it savvy.
Maturity. Tell me more. So I, I think the, the idea, the overall concept, great. But specificity in specific, you know, restrictions in specific locations and just, kids are going to go the most direct route. So if you say, hey, you go through this neighborhood and go over here, it's a lot safer. Or you go along this road and it's a lot quicker. Where do you think they're going to go? I don't think we should give them the option of being on the road, you know, period.
I mean, people always have the option of riding on the road. I mean, you can ride on the, the road right now. It's just, you're sharing a lane as opposed to having.
I'm, I'm talking more about what parents would be able to teach your kids to do. And if you have a bike lane on a road, I just think that's setting us up for, for a bad, bad situation in that specific spot.
Okay, that's helpful, that's helpful feedback.
We have to be a bit situational awareness on that.
Well, I have, I have sort of a follow-up on that. What do you see, given all the recommendations you offered for various sites? What do you see as the proper order of operations to get the best result? I know you said signalization in 2028 with a, a date that was sort of touted. But like, what do you see as the proper way? Like, we do this first to get these trucks over here? Or we need to signalize this first? Like, what do you think is the proper order of operations?
Yeah, so I would recommend prioritizing the construction of Kimo Drive and designating that as the truck route or truck trips associated with the ship. That would be my, my number one focus. And the other ones, you know, can kind of go alongside that. The crosswalk, that's pretty easy, you know. You can, you can do that within the next year. It's low cost, you know, with town resources. The, the buffered sidewalk, you know, that one, you know, would be done. It, it, you know, it depends on how the town wants to proceed with that. If they would like to try out buffer bike lanes on that section first before, you know, before committing to some of those curb changes. But that's something that could be pursued alongside other recommendations and could be done, you know, either in-house or, you know, with, with the help of outside, you know, design firm. But overall, yeah, I would say that pursuing the construction of Kimo Drive and working on designating that as a truck route, that would be what I would recommend focusing on first and foremost.
So question, just on, we talked about, often about the AMPM peak time in traffic. But one of the things that you've done, you gave us was the, was the slide that shows the existing travel data. And it's not AMPM peaks.
That's correct.
So, but I think this is, these, these summations are, are lacking. There are two periods of time, which are basically outside of the primary truck traffic time. So the, like, I, I think it feels like we're missing data points on the intersection assessments.
Okay.
By not seeing the actual, you know, the, the, another, another time period.
Sure. So a couple of, a couple of comments on that. One is that some of the other slides showing the turning movement counts on the network themselves show the actual volumes associated with the AMPM peak periods. The purpose of displaying that slide with the, the truck distribution was really to show that the, the truck trips don't match the same peak periods as, as your general traffic peak periods. That, that's what we were trying to communicate. Now, the report has much more data in it and much more information. And, and we'll have much more information and you'd probably like to.
For the novice looking at this, I'm seeing two points, but I'm also seeing a, a map that shows there's a third point. There's the, there's the primary truck traffic time, but it's not represented in these other charts.
That's correct. And the reason is, is because, because of the way that the truck traffic is distributed, it does not have the same impact on traffic operations during your morning and your evening peak periods, which is the time periods that we use as a standard for capacity analysis that informs the table that you're referencing.
That much I get. I'm just, it, again, I'll let it go. But it just feels like this is, this was identified as a, a truck peak. That's a third data point other than the AMPM. So the overall peak traffic time.
In other words, would it be helpful to also see a similar graph? You know, like the one that we had there, that you referenced there with the trucks, but showing it for the, the whole traffic fleet? Would that be?
I, I'm just thinking like, we're seeing the, for example, the, the intersections, you know, the capacity analysis and the, the peak, peak AMPM peak. What about the rest of the day? I mean, we're looking at two point nine. I understand you can't do, well, you probably can, but nobody would be able to read it.
Well, well, wouldn't you, I'm, I'm sorry, but wouldn't you, all you need to do is to do another capacity analysis at the time? at the time when there's the peak truck traffic. And then you you could see that if, when the peak truck traffic is occurring. If that is not also a time when there's operational problems, low levels of service.
Sure, like AMPM peak truck.
So a third data point will show you that.
So have the fact that you've got schools right in this mix. So you've got traffic coming in and out in the middle of the afternoon, which is not your regular commuter traffic. It's something quite different, but in this particular area, it's current.
We can add that. We can do, run a traffic analysis, a capacity analysis at those intersections for those truck peak periods.
I think that would also capture the school, the the school exit. Because it just feels like we're missing a full picture.
There's a lot of traffic on Sand Hill Road when schools.
It would be interesting to see with the, if if the grades are the same. Are they still F's? Are they C's? Are they, you know, is it really a B at that, you know, at that other data point?
Sure, sure. Yeah, no, that, yeah, we can do that. Essentially, what we're trying to do there is find the worst case operating conditions during the day. But yeah, we can do that and we can compare that with you and 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 make that available for sure.
If nothing else, it would rule that out as being, you know, less of an impact and allowed our AMPM peak times to stand out. With greater significance.
I feel like to the point of what people are asking for, for that, we're actually seeing kind of the curve through the whole day. Where you can see the morning peak, kind of the truck peak, kind of the afternoon peak, sort of the evening peak. That might be a nice way of sort of bringing it all together because you could see where the highest. It's hard to present so much data in a way you can just sort of get it.
I think you've got two points on either end, but you're you're completely excluding the middle. So at least, at least a data point in the middle to show, you know, what you've identified as as the as the peak truck traffic. What is the other impact? What are the impact of those intersections and so forth at that time? So at least three data.
Right. And for that picture that you showed for the truck traffic, it was showing four different intersections. I think one intersection at a time for all the traffic might be easier to understand because the traffic's gonna peak differently at different spots potentially. But it's just a lot of information happening one in one spot.
Not to be, not to be lost, but the significance of the schools is is really, really high. You know, and the the school traffic coming and going is really, is really significant in this.
Significantly in the morning as well.
Well, I know, that's, I mean, coming and going, it's 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 unique to some of the other areas. Sand Hill has two primary, two primary schools and it gets a lot of traffic.
Let's start a quick question. In regards to like the the proper order, we've established that the connection of Kimo and Thompson makes a lot of sense. And I wholeheartedly agree that that's definitely something that we should work towards. It's not a quick fix, however, that's a, that's certainly something that's not a hundred percent control of the town. And it would take some time for that road to be built. In the meantime, talking about some of these other mitigants that you were talking about. I'm looking at the one where you add, we add a five-foot grass buffer on the lower sand hill. You know, making that sidewalk area a little bit safer. That's a quicker, much quicker and much easier fix and probably a great way to start, at least to get something done as an improvement. What does that do in the shrinking of the lanes? What does that do to the existing truck traffic that doesn't have access to the complete road on Kimo and Thompson Drive at that point?
That's a great question. That would have a traffic calming effect. When you narrow lanes, it calms traffic, it slows them down. And so that would complement the other improvements that you're doing there to make it more comfortable for folks, you know, on the on the sidewalk, because it would it would actually slow truck traffic down through that section.
Okay, so that doesn't squeeze them to the point where they're they're riding on the on the sidewalk.
No, no, it's a straight shot right there. Eleven feet is plenty. And then you've got, you know, one foot shoulder. Yep, more than, more than enough.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question for staff. Is this gonna be online?
Yes, so it is. It is online right now. The town has the town does have a webpage for this project, so new information is put up there. Anybody can go and and look at, look through this in detail and some and some of the past history with the project too. And there's a spot on the webpage that you can supply comments. So you can put comments just right in there also. So, you know, we expect more information or more comments from the public following this presentation. So it would be really great if people could either provide their comments there or to staff directly and then we can get them back to the other people working on the on the project also. So we are really hoping to have some more, some more information coming in, not not that it just has to stop tonight at this meeting.
Just one quick comment, and this is just a silly comment, but you have a great results table. Love the results table. It'd be awesome if you actually numbered it.
We can, we can update that and update the.
All right, I see we've got Trevor, and then I'm gonna go. I see we've had someone from the public for a while, so I'm gonna start with Trevor.
Okay, I I would just mention, maybe you'd want to consider as as an intermediate step that Route fifteen and Allen Martin Drive. I I guess a couple of years ago, there was some new channelization done there. You you probably noticed that it wasn't done very well. That it has that large area of crosshatching, plus the the island is not in the correct place. It's put between the two exiting lanes. Would, I mean, the the crosshatching should be done away with with a raised curb. And do you think that would be a good idea for, you know, it's kind of an intermediate till the traffic signal could be installed?
Uh, wanna go back to that slide?
Maybe number twenty-two, I guess.
North and south turns completely in conflict with each other for sight distance. They're they're in direct, they're in direct conflict.
Right here. Um, so, okay, so for the first comment here, the the splitter island. It's splitting the, you know, the the left turn lane and the right turn lane. Oftentimes, we would see that splitter island to the left of the left turn lane. You know, that that could be an option. That's not something that that we analyzed in terms of capacity analysis. But we could take a look at it, you know, see if that that's something that you know, we might change your recommendation, you know, in terms of an intermediate step there.
Right, and 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 also the the crosshatching. It's it's not, it's never a good idea to try to channelize by by using painted stripes. And and so what that that creates a situation there where you could get people who are in the proper lane and want to make a right-hand turn, people can sneak in on their right. And, you know, you get it, you get an additional conflict there. That that big wide hatched area shouldn't be there. And that's that's just my comment and, but I I think it it might be something to put in your report.
Thank you for that comment, making a note of it, and I appreciate it.
All right, I'm gonna go to the public. Margaret, you've had your hand up for a while. You are recognized. No, unmute.
Margaret, you're.
There we are.
Here we go.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I just, I just wanna say, say that I a hundred percent agree with Trevor on that intersection. It's scary. And people coming down one fifteen trying to turn on Allen Martin from the Jericho direction. The traffic gets gets backed up right there. And also in your previous slide with the truck traffic. I'm I'm disappointed that the proposed light at the corner of Sand Hill and Route fifteen has been bumped out yet again. It's been ten years now since they promised us a light there. And your whole truck traffic thing should also consider the impact at the intersection of fifteen and one twenty-eight. I was sitting at a light there and I had a double trailer go by me making the turn on Route fifteen towards towards, from Essex towards Jericho, and it was frankly terrifying. He was like a foot and a half from my my car the whole time he went around the corner. I've seen cars, trucks not be able to make those turns. And it's 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 a little scary. So the truck traffic doesn't stop at the intersection of Sand Hill and Route fifteen. It keeps going. Also, the the whole truck traffic impact on one seventeen should be considered because those trucks had to get into that area from someplace. So so I really think your traffic study should include one seventeen in both directions. And I I don't know if you talked about the length of of Kimo Drive, but it's over length for what the fire department recommends. So, and anyway, thank you, Trev, for that.
Thank you for your comments.
Anyone, any public in the room, Patty, you had your hand up. You wanna go?
Yeah, I, but I think I'm supposed to go first. I don't wanna.
The record, if this stands second round. Two things. In the presentation, the beginning, we characterized the study area as industrial. It's not zone industrial. It's zone resource preservation district industrial. There's a few small settlements, not really much, a subtle, a few small villages. Yep, yep. This study area was characterized as industrial, and I just wanted to point out that it's it's not, it's RPDI, Resource Preservation District. And it's not so much that it matters for this study, but for somebody who sees it, they may go and look up those uses and think that that's what's allowed there and it's a subset. The second thing, I was recently parked behind the truck at the intersection of Thompson Drive and and Allen Martin Parkway, Allen Martin Drive. And I said to myself, that truck is gonna turn one way or the other. Which way will it go? And of course, it turned left, towards Lower Sand Hill Road. And it occurred to me at that time that if there was just a sign there that said truck route, have to turn right. That would be a good short-term mitigating mechanism. Technically, it already is because you have to have an overweight permit to turn left. There's no overweight trucks supposedly allowed on on Lower Sand Hill Road. So I was kind of disappointed that as one of the short-term mitigating mechanisms, not recommending that a truck route be designated where trucks would have to travel onto fifteen, go around three eighty-nine to access one seventeen.
I think this is a perfect segue for me, and I loved your speech, and I loved your solution. Connect Thompson to Kimo, that would solve all our problems. People on Sand Hill Road can't even cross the street with their dog to get to our neighborhood, which is one hundred and thirty homes. And there's a lot of young kids that that live on Sand Hill that bike to school, and he's right. They don't go through the neighborhood.
No gap for the record.
Yes, you're right. You're good. Anyway, they don't go through the neighborhood to get to the school. They go up. And people with a stroller, you want a grass mitigation? Hello, try pushing a stroller from the bottom of seventeen up that grassy area with a kid in tow in a stroller. For people that live along the bottom of Sand Hill, or or a little bit on one seventeen that want to go walk. You can't push a stroll on grass. You need not only a bike lane, my husband almost got killed, another story, another time. And you need a sidewalk. So, my presentation, and I'll keep it short, is thank you. I'm here to raise concerns about the long-term truck routing along Lower Sand Hill Road. I loved your speech, though, so this is just an addition. This road is a residential corridor with limited infrastructure, and I'm asking for clarity on how current practices align with state guidance, federal classification standards, and the adoption, transportation planning process. And I'm just gonna, just before I read anything, I'm just gonna say the very last thing. So that I want to be clear that I'm not accusing any particular person of wrongdoing. I'm asking for transparency, clarity, and consistency between the way the road is being used today and the standards and plans that guide transportation decisions. I'm talking today, not twenty thirty-five. We're suffering now, like right now, twenty twenty-five. I look forward to hearing the town and CCRP's explanation. So, my background's medical research, so I don't know anything about transportation, but here's my research. The FHWA, you know, Federal Highway Administration Functional Classification cannot be ignored or reinterpreted. And CCRPC, and I'm not pointing fingers at any one person, does not have the authority to override the Federal Highway Administration Functional Classification rules. Lower Sand Hill Road is a residential zone. Therefore, it's a collector of that residential zone. Residential collectors cannot function as arterials or industrial truck routes under federal law. CCRPC, for example, cannot allow truck rerouting before the transportation plan is actually adopted. Under twenty-four VSA four three eight five, you cannot implement policies from a transportation plan that has not been adopted. So CCRPC cannot support pre-implementation of truck rerouting based on a draft plan. It also cannot create a residential truck bypass to protect Route fifteen. The Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Regional Planning Policies, I'm only talking policies here, cannot displace industrial traffic, truck traffic off a state highway and into a residential zone neighborhood. Federal Highway Administration prohibits downgrading a state route by upgrading a residential collector road into a truck corridor. CCRPC's complete streets policy prohibits shifting burdens to lower-class roads. Complete streets policy, which you really filled in, you did great, by the way, at the regional and federal level prohibits routing heavy traffic onto a road that cannot support multimodal requirements. Yeah, my husband almost got killed, I told you. If Route fifteen becomes walkable, that does not give CCRPC or the Metropolitan Group permission to dump trucks onto Lower Sand Hill Road. The Federal Highways Administration Functional Classification, Lower Sand Hill is a residential collector, not an arterial. I already said that. I'll repeat again. CCRPC cannot endorse industrial expansion without proper access routes. And you gave them your two cents to connect, which was great. Under nineteen VSA one 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 one, four ones there, developers are responsible for building proper access to industrial and commercial zones. CCRPC and the NTP cannot shift a developer's seven million dollar access road obligation onto an existing residential zoned area. CCRPC is required to ensure functional classification and highway hierarchy. And that hierarchy has to be respected. Route fifteen and Vermont one seventeen are the correct truck routes by design, classification, and highway hierarchy. Using Sand Hill Road to bypass the state highway system violates every Federal Highway Administration and D-Trans standard. As Ken just said, he suggested just put a sign to have the people coming off Thompson to take a right. to have the people coming off Thompson to take a right. Get back onto, onto Route 15 to go around Cirque Highway, which was the two, the March, I almost know the date, March 16th, 2016. And it was done by Si Sarah Pelly. He was part of the group. I, I know your whole, I know that whole thing by heart. I've memorized it because I've presented it to the select board and the select board told me, go to the environmental corps. That's how they tried to get rid of me there. So Route 15 and Vermont 117 are the correct truck routes, as I said. Almost done. CCRPC and MTP cannot call Lower Sand Hill an arterial by convenience. Functional classification is determined by land use, geometry, multimodal support and design standards as our guru on the planning commission, he's a traffic expert. If that spoke of on the, on offline here. Lower Sand Hill Road fails every arterial criterion. Residential land use, there's 130 homes that are but Sand Hill and there's 39 homes right along Sand Hill with kids and with dogs that can't cross the road. Zero sidewalks. We need sidewalks to push those strollers, not grass. Zero shoulders, no bike facilities, insufficient width, insufficient right of way and and then inconsistent with context labeling and arterial does not make it one. And then the last thing is right here, CCRPC must follow public process and please, please not behind the scenes, you know, or behind closed doors, rerouting trucks for the last four years where people have actually come out and complained that you received without public process, without a completed plan and without statutory compliance is not planning. It is an end run around the public. Thank you very much. Patty. The grass is a buffer between road and the sidewalk.
Sort of natural sidewalk.
No, I'm talking about Lower Sand Hill. There's no, there's only one, a white line. They're great talking about what they want to do. I understand. I understand what he's saying, but I'm talking about just Lower Sand Hill and I'm talking about the grass from 117 where I see, because I take Sand Hill every day to go home. I live, every day I'm on this road, Lower Sand Hill. That's where I live. And there's a couple of family that pushes a stroller from the bottom of Sand Hill on the grass, which they've been moving, which is great. But it's hard to push a stroller on grass. They actually need a sidewalk and more than a one-foot buffer. And my husband counted the grates. There's eight grates from the steep part of Sand Hill down to the bottom. He has to literally ride over the grates to, to bike Route 2 to do his bike training and then to come back home. We don't want to go through the neighborhood or just at the top of Sand Hill. Why would we want to go around the neighborhood? He's supposed to come home. And there's eight grates and there's only a one-foot line because there's a curb. You can't pull up on the side. There's a six to eight inch curb. So I live there. So I, I did this research mainly to because that's my background and I don't know anything about transportation. So it's a learning experience. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's no further public comment on this. Can you tell, just remind us what the next steps are for your.
Be a part of the public?
No, absolutely. Take us home.
The, the first, Matt, that showed the, the whole area.
Is that one, is that one okay?
Question is, did you consider the connection of Allen Martin Parkway to Allen Martin Drive, which has been in the plans for a long, long time? And if you didn't, why, why didn't you? And also, did you consider other industrial development areas, areas that are adjacent to this planning area that might have access to some of this network you're, you're talking about?
So we're aware that the, the connection that you mentioned, you know, that had been a planned connection from 289 there.
Right.
We did not pursue that as an option. We also understand that goes through a residential neighborhood as well. But, but the answer is no, we did not consider that in this study as an, as an option for an alternative.
My, my impression is that that connection was planned long ago with the thought that some of this area would be developed for industrial purposes and that this would be an access. And so and the, and the right of way is, you know, it's already there. I just, you know, why, what the construction of that leg would not be a minor thing for sure. And it could be reasonably comparable for the continuation of chemo drive, the whole, the whole construction of chemo drive. But, and like I say, in the, the second part of the question, a potential impact from adjacent areas that are currently not developed, but certainly are zoned as such.
So for the second part, the answer is no. We, we kept the, the study, you know, in, in terms of assessing future industrial development to the, the boundaries that we displayed on the, on the, on the first slides there. And we did not look at, you know, land outside of that. And you know, and the potential for that development. Is that land that you see possibly being developed within the next 10 years?
Yep. I think there's some serious land negotiations going on. There was some recent discussion about some of that area for another access. But, you know, that was one of the areas that was considered for the, the, the women's prison area here. But there's this, this area here, it certainly has potential.
Okay.
I think for the, for the purpose of our study, it looked like, you know, we had to kind of draw a, a line at some point and it seemed like the, the bound, the time period that we're looking within did not, not consider that other area within that, that time period. So that was the rationale of it. But certainly other, you know, your other comments are suggested to take other comments and, but that was the rest, that was the rationale for it.
Looks like Gina Barrett has her.
Gina?
Hi, sorry I'm late because I had another obligation prior, so I missed a lot of it, but I was grateful to hear the mention of the school timing. I live right, my house is right on that map. I'm right on the corner of Maple Lawn and Sand Hill. So I see this every day. This is our daily life and really the traffic on Sand Hill is very school-driven. There's a lot of kids. There's a lot of families. There's a lot of walkers and dog walkers up on Upper Sand Hill. So I appreciate the comments about make sure that we're factoring in the school traffic, which is huge and heavy during, especially during the school year. I like to see the light which has been put off, someone said 10 years. I think it's been since we bought this house and I've been here 22 years that when we bought the house, they said a light was going in at the end of Sand Hill onto 15. It's still not there and it's, it's been desperately needed and that would be a huge improvement if we added that. And I hope we just recognize that this is a neighborhood and we're getting swallowed by all these trucks behind us. When we first bought this house, Corporate Drive, it wasn't meant as industrial. Again, I keep saying this over and over again, but to keep calling it industrial and I look at those three giant white boxes that are immediately in my backyard. The noise from those, it's a giant sound tunnel of the trucks and the nitrogen tank that's in the middle of the Blodja building. They're great neighbors, but it's just not ideal to have that up against an established neighborhood and there are homes and families that were here before and I continue to hope that there's considerations for the homes on Sand Hill. And, and when you talk about, well, you're not going to connect throughout Allen Martin because there's a neighborhood in there. We're a neighborhood too. I know we're just little old Sand Hill. We're not the fancy homes. But we're the ones taking the brunt of all this traffic and the trucking and the noise and we have for years and it just keeps compounding as it gets older. It would be great. I'd like to see the grass and the widening of the road. If kids could actually bike to school, Essex Town has turned into kind of a, a busing school because I was told, even though I literally live across the street from Founder's Road, I was told my kid had to take the bus because it's not safe for her to cross the street. So i- if, I don't know if there were crosswalk considerations too, to slow the traffic because Sand Hill curves right at Maple Lawn. That's a very dangerous curve. And I don't know if you were adding in more crosswalks with lights so that people, I know in Milton, there's a light which is pretty cool on a curve that when you hit the button, the light flashes back. So the traffic behind knows that there's a flashing light ahead because it's on a curve and so many people cross. I know it's just a weird little horseshoe, but so many people use that to add steps to their walks on our street. But I appreciate the progress and I would love to see a bike lane and have it be more pedestrian and, and school friendly and be aware that there are so many kids that use Sand Hill. Thank you.
All right. Next steps.
Yep. So after tonight, we will review the input that we've received, discuss it among the project team and make refinements to analysis as well as any refinements to recommendations before preparing to make a final presentation to the select board. And in between that, we'll, you know, we'll be preparing a draft report and have that reviewed by certain individuals. And then after the final presentation to the select board, we will incorporate the results of that meeting in order to prepare and submit the final report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lois, last, last word.
I'm surprised nobody mentioned the pending and possible distribution warehouse and its accompanying traffic. Would you care to address that?
The elephant in the room.
You're talking about?
No, no, I know. I don't think that there's no real definitive anything that can be factored into anything. And it's not germane to the PC or this study. It's the hypothetical.
There's nothing hypothetical about something that's made a play for a certain area of a certain type of development which would greatly impact the traffic. And while you're studying and projecting traffic, if it's legitimate to project traffic of one sort, why not project traffic of another sort?
I could untap that. So for the information that you had, when you're generating the traffic information, the subdivision that was done had a traffic study that went along with it and projected a certain total amount of traffic for that subdivision, which this other project that's being discussed would have been a subset of that. But, but you had that traffic that you were considering for that subdivision, but looking at the entire subdivision, not looking at individual potential uses in that. So you did factor in some of that traffic, some of the traffic study that would impact like that.
Yes, we did review the traffic study associated with that distribution center and that was incorporated into this analysis.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to items. B. PC and DRB discussion about zoning and subdivision regulations. This will be primarily focused around the table because we wanted to get these two groups together for a while. Wanted Ian to meet Ian. Among others. Among, among others.
Depends on who you ask.
All right, so our, our main idea in getting you here was our, our big thing, of course, is town plans and putting the town plan into action. But you are where the rubber meets the road. And so what we wanted to know is are there broadly speaking, things that you see? And I think staff had a couple of ideas here, things that I think we sort of thought about that you would like us take under, under advisory or look at or sort of changes, things that keep coming up, I guess I'd say that you'd say we'd like clarity on this or we'd be able to fulfill our objectives better if that. And Captain, you had a couple of things that you'd noted already.
Yeah, so I, I think there are two that have thoroughly been communicated. One is the 50-foot buffer and RPDI and waivers associated with that. And then the steep slopes. Both of these have come up quite a bit recently in the DRB applications. I think other things that I thought about, I feel like you've struggled a bit with figuring out that, that if multi-use paths or sidewalks are actually required and what, what the width should be for those, like in a new subdivision in particular. Sometimes just in front of maybe a commercial building and you think connections. See. I think waivers of all sorts have come up and maybe that's more of an issue or a comment from the public versus what, what you see, but that's, that's something that's been heard. Let's see. I think there's some question about street trees sometimes. And then I think sometimes how to interpret comments, particularly from the fire chief that he has and wondering if maybe there should be some more specificity, specificity. In the regulations to help direct, you know, what, what is, what, what would be required. And then I think another one that has come up with that recent demise, I don't know if the planning commission knows this, but of the, the consent agenda. So that, that we've been told by legal counsel that the consent agenda process should not be followed anymore. And so that means any minor amendments, any boundary adjustments all need to go now to the DRB for full review. And state statute allows for more flexibility than that, allows some administrative approval for minor amendments with, with, with a lot of guidance and boundary adjustments actually don't even require any review, administrative review. And then minor subdivisions also, which it doesn't define what a minor subdivision is either, but that, those, those could all be administratively approved. But those are just some of the things that came to the top in my mind.
Right. So looking at the DRB, maybe their chair even to tell me, to tell us what, what comes to mind in terms of, we like it if you did this, it would make it easier for us if you tweak this, tweak that. We read the town plan. We think you should do it this way.
Are we talking town plan or town red?
Well, for your perspective, town red, obviously.
One of the first things that we can, that I can think of that, that Stephanie's kind of bringing up is the, is how much do we need to weigh, have the town plan as part of our, our thought process? It's the regulations that really guide us and we get caught a lot in a lot of our conversations with, well, that's not necessarily part of the town plan or it's not specified that way in the top plan. The regulations that we have currently are actually somewhat different than that. So getting some, some clarity with that would be super helpful for us. Steep slopes have been a constant issue with, and there's probably not a lot of places left in Essex to, to build where there aren't steep slopes in there. So we need more specificity on that, specifically.
Granularity is a little easier.
Granularity, yeah. Not jocularity. In regards to, so the 15% and, and of less of not desirable and 20% forbidden essentially is great, but what does that actually mean? Right? And I know that I'm wearing the DRB hat at the moment, but I also know that the planning commission has had a, a work group that's been working on this for, for a while yet, but specifically we're looking for, what does that 20% mean? Is that 20% basically when you're looking at, at the footprint map and, and it shows there might be a divot and so that's therefore a 20% area? Or are we talking about, is it 20% over 100 feet? Is it over 1,000 feet? Where, where is it, where is it acceptable to accommodate some 20, 20% slope builds that are not necessarily destructive environmentally? Or is there such a thing, right? Like this, it's just kind of a vague thing that we just bump up it to and and it's hard for, for the developers and it's hard for the engineers and it's hard for us to be able to satisfactorily have an answer saying, well, this is exactly what the regulation is supposed to be. And that's a huge one for us. We, the 50-foot buffer is something that we have bumped into quite a bit. We haven't seen anything recently because there hasn't been anything before us recently, but when something comes back from the RPDI, it will be an issue. So, and I know there's a work group that's working on that as well. So, so understanding, like giving us specifics about what is acceptable. So, so understanding, like giving us specifics about what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. We as a DRB group here all the time that we are, we do nothing but love to make waivers and exceptions and, and not follow any rules. But that's really not the case. And so we just need more clearance, more clear ideas about all these areas. But I also don't want to take it up there. We have a full, the board here, so I, I would prefer the board actually also provide their thoughts too. So Dusty, you're here, so.
With my, with my DRB hat, I think the biggest single issue in front of us has been, repeated issue has been slopes, you know, how to apply the slope discussion. And I know Trevor had, had information about that. You know, is it, is it a portion of the lot? Is it any, any portion of the lot? Is it a percentage of the lot? Is it, the discussion has been on whether it's a manmade slope versus a natural slope. I think, and, and quite frankly, it, it's not just a DRB issue. It's historically been a, a PC issue way back in time as well. The, the fifty foot buffer in the interior, that's probably the second priority, just because it's a hot enough topic that, you know, there's a lot of different opinions on what can and what should be done and so forth.
Hubie. She needs to hit send.
Yeah, the, the, the slope issue, I think, could sum it up. How do you measure? How do you quantify? What is fifteen percent? What is twenty percent? And, and how do you, well, like I say, what, what part, what portion of the lot? What, in fact, since the, the, the measurement criteria is not there, it just simply says fifteen percent, twenty percent. Doesn't say, doesn't say how you measure it.
Right.
And the, the engineering firms have, have been using LiDAR, which gives you this squirrely, looks like a, a micro infestation thing or whatever. It just is this spotty stuff that shows you here are the slopes. Well, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't really show good definite. And so I think they're at a loss as well. Yeah, with, you know, the developer, the presenters to say, you know, how do you really want us to define this? As a part of that too, that as Ian mentioned, you know, it's like, I, I think the intent is, is impact on erosion and environmental issues. So, for example, if you had a lot and you had a, a mound there that had a lot of twenty percent, but as a part of the development, you are now going to eliminate that mound and, and the resultant developed a lot, maybe improves the flow and control of rainwater or runoff or whatever. So would you deny it just because the, the existing lot that you're going to impact has a lot of twenty percent that you're going to do away with, you know? So it's the measurement. The, you know, the fifty foot, fifty foot buffer and probably going to get shot for this, okay? But I think there's, there's, and again, not finger pointing, but there are multiple issues with that. One of them being enforcement, okay? And I think enforcement in general, meaning how do we, when there is a, is a subdivision or a plan that's approved and there are conditions attached, how do we follow through to see that that enforcement, those conditions have been met? And I'm not sure that the regulations are, are solid there. You know, that there are some, some penalties, I believe, and so on for, for certain things. But, you know, the, and it's not just the fifty foot buffer thing. It's, it's, I think, I want to, and I don't want to generalize too much, but for, for example, I brought it up the other night, is, is why, why does the DRB chair have to sign the MyLAR? Okay. And I think we, we talked, I think that was, I think you about it, Dusty, that's really like a town clerk's question. Maybe more of a legal question as to why. So that's a process thing. That, that may not necessarily be, you know, planning commission necessarily. But again, that, that kind of falls under enforcement. Trying to think the, another, talked about, yeah, slopes, buffers. Oh, there's something, there was another, another, another subject that and it's, it's, it's going. But, oh yes, oh no, I know. And I think Ken has talked about this, that the consolidation of the zoning regs and the subdivision regs into one document. You know, I think, of course, I've committed it out of memory, you know? I mean, it's just, I mean, there's, there's a lot of words there, okay? And it just, and, and I think it's not difficult to find conflicting information between the two. So, and that's a, that's a huge task, I know, to, to get that done, but that would be helpful. And the town plan question that Catherine brought up, that, and I'm sure this is one of Stephanie's favorites and, and I agree with her that, that, okay, some more definition about how we, we, if you will, honor that, that town plan and all the words that say it must conform to the town plan. Well, but, but, but part of it, you know, as some lawyers have said, you would, there, there's no sense of bringing, asking for a variance because if, if you, if you really got down to it, you could never grant a variance. Okay. That's the same thing here. You, if you said it conforced the town plan, well, you'd never, you'd never approve anything because you would always be able to find a little element in that town plan somewhere that says you can't do this.
Well, not only that, just, just the fact that you have to update the town plan every, what is it? They just made it eight years instead of five. Well, yeah, so I mean, how does everybody keep up with that?
Yeah. Well, yeah, you're responding to whatever the, the current town plan is and so on. But, so yeah, some, some, and I'm not sure that's a wordsmithing thing or whatever it said. So that it must confirm, it must, must conform substantially to the town plan, you know? Or something like that. I, I don't know what the, what the legal, legal words would be, but that certainly is, is one of the, one of the, so. That's all I have at the moment, anyway.
Now click send. If I may.
You may.
About six months ago, the DRB received an application for subdividing a piece of property to build a second building on that current plan. We learned in the meeting that the access road to this neighborhood allowed only, I want to say fifty residential residents.
Thirty-five. Fifty, we want to, we want, I guess.
Right. And we learned that that neighborhood had well over, close to four times that number of residents that were, that were already built, already constructed. So we, so the applicant wanted to add one home to this neighborhood that was already far beyond what the regulations said. And our hands were kind of tied in some ways. Adding one home wouldn't necessarily add a huge burden that would have already been overburdened had we followed the regs years and years and years ago by allowing these additional homes. So something that we might want to consider is some kind of language that would put in some kind of mitigation with examples like that where the town has already approved something that's far beyond what's allowed in the regulation, if there's something like that, that's already beyond what's regulated. Applications such like, like that example might go to the select board instead of the art and DRB or in addition to the BRB, something along those lines.
Just a follow up on that too, that one, it might be good to understand that, I believe that development was in existence beyond the fifty units prior to the existence of the zoning regulations, subdivision. So, you know, that's a good point as far as did it, did it ever apply? Was it always going to start? And at what point do you stop? Yeah.
Yeah.
I know sharing may have come, come in on that too.
Steep slopes.
Well.
They've been popular lately.
Could somebody kill me first? I, I just have to, I wasn't. I, I, yeah. Who's going to second it? That neighborhood was my neighborhood that we're talking about. And I, I want you to consider for, not my neighborhood, but in the future, the problem that happened there. You have to honor the regulations, whether it is one more home. And here's what happened in that neighborhood. They kept saying, oh, it's only four more. It's already dangerous. Then the next development came up, oh, it's only five more. So I think that one, like for that neighborhood, was probably the absolute breaking point. And it, it didn't get denied. It probably would have gone through. One more home, one more home. And yes, the regulations happen before, but that happens all the time. You buy, you buy a lot and you don't develop it on it and suddenly they make a, a rule that you can't develop it on it anymore. I mean, it happens, but you just can't, just because, I think Peter Lyons said this once, just because you drop the ball once, doesn't mean you have to keep dropping it. That is a dangerous neighborhood and there shouldn't be one more home or four more or five more. I mean, I think since the first only a few more happened, there's been like twelve homes. There's been a lot of mother-in-law homes. So, you know, I, I just hope in the future the DRB PC considers the fact that, you know, it's not just one more. It's, it's a dangerous situation that you're sometimes thinking about and, you know, you can't help it if it was made dangerous before. You don't just keep on doing it. And can I go over the other things that I was concerned about also?
Please.
I'll be short. One, and I'm probably the minority on this, but I don't think the state even gives us the right to waive our regulations. I think if you look at state statute, it's only dimensional requirements that we can waive. So I, you know, I don't know if we have the right to do waivers. And when we met with the VC, VLCT the first time, they sort of said that. So that'd be a good question in our training to ask whether, you know? And then the, the twenty percent slopes, I'd also like to see more specification. And also, why even bother with the discouraging fifteen percent slopes? Do we ever, what do we do? Say like, you know, go team? I mean, how, how, how do we, you know, we don't do it. So either put it in as a conditional use or get rid of it. And there, there are nationwide regulations for slopes that do specify how you calculate it. You know, if, if there's like a, you're just, you know, dropping two feet, you know, for two feet wide. I mean, that's not really a slope. And I'd also like to see some specification on whether, how much we're supposed to comply with the town plan. That's it.
Nick, were you done?
Yeah.
I am done.
Stephanie?
For me on the town plan, I think the staff does a good job of calling out where the development meets regular parts of the town plan. I think that's the thought process is that, hey, this development does conform, it does hit some of the things that we say in the town plan we want. I think it's come up recently with one development in particular. You know, you can turn around and use the town plan against any development and for any development. And for me, the specificity would be how, how many points of the town plan do we need to look at for the, for us to check that box that says, yes, this is complying with the town plan. This is in the vein of what the town is, is asking for. It's, to me, it's quantifying how many parts of the town plan does it need to, do we need to look at to check that box that it does? It's not going to conform to everything and you're always going to be able to find a way or a reason why a development that you don't agree with should not be approved. Like that's just the nature of, of human nature. So that's my suggestion to chew on is like giving us more specificity and how many elements of the town plan do we review for that? On board with the steep slopes, you know, we go out, we do these site visits and it's just like, really? This is what we're complaining about is like, and it's like a little itty bitty spot on the property is like, so again, we're getting a little bit more granular to, you know, we're really going to kill a housing project because one, one acre of this ten acre lot has a steep slope in it that's not even being impacted by the development. And I think we struggle because the way it is written is so blunt. It, as a lawyer recently told me, the law is gray. It is not as black and white as everybody would like it to be. There is interpretation to the law. I may interpret how you write something very different from the public. Does it mean one's right or wrong? But that's how law is written. It is not written as black and white. And I think that comes to the waiver part too, like we'll look at things very differently, they interpret it. So for me, it's just the clarification around the interpretation of, of the regulation that the town is looking for. And so in some of the regs, they just need to be flushed out a little bit more to give a little bit more of a guidance. Because I work in a highly regulated field and nothing is black and white. It's, you do this, except for when the moon is gray and the grass is purple, then you can do this. So there's always another way to, to get something. Yeah. And like, when is it okay to do that and when is it not? Because we, we shouldn't be as, we shouldn't be too rigid to the point that we're discouraging the thriving of our, of our town. And that's my concern is that sometimes the reg is just a little too narrow. And it's, and, and I agree with Hubie, I don't think that was the intent. I think it's hard to write regulation that is all encompassing. And so as the staff hears me all the time, hey, when are we going to get the, the new updates? Cause we also don't comply with the new regulations that have come through from the state of Vermont as well. So for me, that's a big one because I have architects and engineers telling me, actually, Act 181 now trumps it and says we can do X. And I think that, that's hard for people because our, our regs just are updated too. And that's going to trump it, even if we have, yeah. So those are my areas of concern.
You know, I think that to some extent, what the regulations may lack is the justification. Why does this regulation appear? And if you had the whys, it would be easier to then look at the why against what would happen in that particular lot. So if, if it has to do with the stability of the house, for example, well, then you might want to take a look at the, the steep slope if it's going to impact the, the security and the stability of the home. You know, whether it's, you know, a hill coming in on the house or was a hill going away from the house and the house going with it. But, you know, I mean, that's just a sort of exaggerated example. But if you had the whys for the regulations that, you know, what people were concerned about, it might be easier, I think it would be easier to evaluate a particular situation and say, well, is this a concern or is it not a concern? Or are these concerns, are they not concerns? So putting in the whys may be.
Whys.
Whys.
General thought about the idea of, of certain, oh, sorry, Trevor.
Okay. Someone said my name.
Yeah, you're up.
Oh, I am. Oh, well, you know, the tw, the, the slope thing. I went and looked, tried to find the basis for it, but it just seems the fact that it is almost nationwide that, that the twenty percent is accepted as, as, you know, the maximum. Now, and I, and, and originally I, I looked at that because somebody came before one of the presenters and implied that there was something unreasonable about the 20% limit. And so I went and looked and it's the entire country has that limit of 20%. So that's not unreasonable. Then the, the other thing is of course, is that, um, as you develop more and more, there, there's less and less flat places. And so you could see that there's other, there's places where they've made, uh, Summit, New Jersey. Uh, I found the regulation where, uh, you could have a, a certain square footage greater than 20%. Um, and then the, the, there's other places, uh, they do other things. And you know, I've, I've got several of these things that, that we could go over. But, um, I think the point is, is that the measurement issue is, is difficult. And, and of course they use LiDAR. And I think we were out there at the one place there, Hubie, that, uh, it looked like, uh, the 20% slope was a, a, a pile of wood. But, um, you know, so the, I mean, the LiDAR is just, nobody actually goes out there and looks. It's, it's just like an automatic thing. But there are places you shouldn't build, like houses on steep slopes. And, um, but I think we can find something. You know, I understand you don't want to like shut everybody, all these developers down. But at the same time, i- it's a real problem. And I don't know, that's, that's my two cents. Uh, and you know, I, this, it is a problem. It's a problem here. It's a problem with Lake Champlain erosion, soil erosion, uh, into the lake. And i- i- it's, it's again, people have come and presented. They want to build a development and they make it sound like it's a trivial thing, but it is not. And, uh, but I think we can find something i- in these different regulations that, that, uh, could kind of, uh, uh, mediate things.
Yeah, I would just reiterate, I, I agree. I don't think that, that it's unreasonable to expect the 20% slope is, is, uh, the right number for, for it to build. I think that the clarification of what that means in general, rather than just saying flat 20%.
Right.
You can, you can find any hill in any town, anywhere that's going to have a 20% slope. So what does that 20% actually mean? And, and what are the regulations around that? What, what's the tip of what's not? Is it?
Yeah. I, I mean, we ha- we have had, I, I know that there's been, uh, uh, there was an application a few years ago and it didn't come up during it, but there was these photos of places where the houses had been built on the steep slope. And there was this really bad erosion. And that, that was some development here.
Section, section. Yeah.
I think that's what it's aimed at.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, and, and on the flip side of that, what are the repercussions? If, uh, if the steep slope, that particular development, something like that particular development is allowed to build and they've promised to mitigate all of the erosion pieces, which, you know, was a reason for the, for the waiver, if you will. Then what happens when it's not there? I mean, what, the planning commission has the ability to, uh, help, I think, plan with staff and, and with the select board, make recommendations about like, there should be severe consequences if you don't follow through with what your, what your preached intent was.
Right.
Enforcement, you get enforcement. Right. That's, that's, that's really where it should be and it should be significant. So.
Yeah. I agree with that.
So specificity enforcement, these are the slopes, some, like, sounds like the thing.
Looks like Sharon put her hand up again.
Oh, Sharon, yeah.
That's okay. I'm, I'm, I'm far away. Um, I, uh, I just wanted to point out on the steep slopes. I think it also, uh, and the neighborhood, I think you're, you may be thinking about is my old neighborhood. Um, everything happens there. Um, if you, if you ever want to do it, walk along Fern Hollow where there was supposed to be a street and, um, a bunch of houses along Cindy Lane built adjacent to steep slopes. And because it's, um, sandy soil with clay underneath, um, the, um, erosion just kept, the banks just kept moving until they were right up to the houses. And like people's decks were falling off. And, um, Dennis Lutz has fought that area for years trying to fill it in. I mean, there's really nothing you can do and soil is sandy and you're near steep slopes and there's, and there's water. So I don't know how you get that in the regulations because if you're on a solid steep slope that's like stone or you're, uh, adjacent to, um, uh, a tributary to Lake, uh, Alderbrook, which, um, Fern Hollow is, I mean, that, that can just cave in with just a one rain event. So I, I think somehow you have to consider adjacent, um, you know, streams and that sort of thing. And then the other thing I want to, uh, point out is, uh, what Paula said, which I really like is if we do these new regulations and we put in the front of each regulations, the intent, what, what did we mean by this versus us at the DRB always saying like, I don't even get why this is here? Like, what are we doing? But if they, at the beginning of the regulation, um, a lot of towns do that. You put why, why you have this regulation, why you want it to be enforced? Um, then we're not wondering 10 years later, why it's even there.
Yeah, I could, I could add on to the, the bow. What Sharon just said is that, cause I made a note almost exactly like that, is that, uh, we need, as we're considering something, well, let me jump back. We're adjudicators, okay? Uh, you cannot make, and it's been noted many times, you can't make a regulation that covers everything. Okay. And so some of the public says, well, just do away with waivers. Well, you know, they're, they're there for a reason because you can't cover everything. You need to have the flexibility. So as a board, we have to consider, and I think we do, uh, what, what is the spirit of the regulation? What's the intent, the general intent and so on? So it's taking a broad, a broad look at things. Uh, waivers, variances, you know, what's the difference? You know, could, could someone have suggested instead of saying waivers, maybe we say, okay, let's, let's make that a variance. Well, you know, I'd have to look at, you know, the, what are the, the definitions of what a variance is and so on? But still, you, you need to have flexibility because regulations can't cover everything. So, uh, the dead end road thing, okay? Uh, that, that's a, uh, be careful here. Where does that number come from? Okay. It's, it, to me, it's arbitrary. Why isn't it 100? Why isn't it 10? Why is it 50? What is the, the statistics that say that it has to be 50? You have to look at the situation. What if somebody built a road? Okay, let's, let's take some, some observed things. Okay, I'm going to build a road. I'm going to make it 200 feet wide. Okay. And so now, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to mitigate the chances of a tree falling across the road. By the way, uh, we hear this all, oh, a tree fall, what, what are the, what are the facts? How many times does a tree fall across the road? How many times has there been an impediment that created a, a situation, uh, that made this dead end road a real problem? Okay. Uh, so we're supposed to be judging things on facts and statistics. If I said, okay, I'm going to build a road, it's 200 feet wide. Now the chances of a tree falling across it or having a single accident that could keep somebody from, uh, having access, uh, I'm going to admit, so my, my statistical analysis says that the chances of this happening over the next 50 years is yada, yada. Now, you know, who can, who can come up with that kind of information? Again, where does the 50 come from? Uh, you know, what, what's, what's the rationale for that? It was pointed out at one of our meetings when this was discussed, that there are many streets within the town currently that don't meet that criteria. Okay. And that, so how many times has there been a problem that, that, uh, has, uh, resulted because, uh, the, the access was, uh, was denied? So.
That's, that's tricky.
Six in the last 20 years.
What's that?
Six in the last 20 years.
Six in the last 20 years. Yeah, yeah. So what were they, you know?
Five of them were Tanglewood.
And so this is another one, it's like, like, oh, the 50 foot buffer, trees are falling down on cars. Well, show me some pictures. Okay. You know, but so, so that's again, it's, it's these emotional arguments and so on. We're supposed to be adjudicating with facts and information, finding the facts and so on. So, uh, the, the more that the regulations can, can help us with that in that area is, uh, is would be beneficial.
To some extent, the size of the buffer is dependent on what you want it to screen and what kind of vegetation or other things you're using to create that screen. Um, and how much space they need. So.
We could talk about buffers all night long here.
Quick thought, a follow-up to the town plan discrepancy with regulation follow-up. It, it really feels like the biggest issue is what do we do when the regulations aren't up to date with the town plan? I mean, what, what do we do with that gap? So that's the credence that we're talking about. And, and it was said, we can use the town plan to justify a waiver. We can use the town plan to deny an application. But where, where is the breakpoint is when the regulations are mostly clear-ish. Um, and they're, they're written to accommodate the last town plan changes. What do we do when we have town plan changes that haven't been codified into regulation yet?
Right.
That's, I think, that to me, that's the, that's the gap in, in, in what we're trying to do. We have the town plan, but it hasn't been, hasn't been translated into regulation yet. It exists, it's been voted on and approved, but it doesn't regulations to support it. Yeah.
One of the things that, that bothers me about it is that i- if you, if you are revising the town plan every eight years, I mean, regulations generally are in place for longer than eight years.
I would also say to go to the why part or the, the intent would be helpful to keep consistency at the DRB. I, I find it very hard when we have old applications coming forward and the intent of the regulations are not clear enough. And we are, we're a different board. So we're interpreting it differently than say the old PC did.
And we're always old.
And that puts the applicant and I would say the board members in a very precarious situation as to what was the intent behind, um, the regulation for this development. And I think consistency for developers is, is, is important. I think it is important for us to be consistent, for our developers to know what they need to bring to us to get an approval. And we don't have to keep this back and forth. We don't have to talk about waivers as much. And they're getting it. They're getting that we're a different board and we're looking at it differently. And I think, but it takes months to get there. And I think we had a huge backlog of, we're going to continue this, we're going to continue this because of that, because of the intent and trying to come up with a consistency. It's very difficult. And I think that it's not just the switching from the PC to the DRB. I think as the DRB members change, just like as the PC members change, thoughts and opinions are going to change. And I think for development review, that's, it, it should be less about that and more about what's in there and what the intent was behind it. So that's kind of how I, I feel would be better consistent for the town.
What I think is kind of interesting, and we're, we're talking about Tanglewood specifically, but it could be anywhere, places that are currently non-conforming, that it was, it was meant to be 50. Maybe it was an arbitrary figure, but it was meant to be 50 and now it's at 105 or whatever. If there were not the stricture of 50 in place hypothetically, and it was 105 going to 106, would you still have said, oh no, we don't want this for reasons that get to why it was 50 in the first place? If that's making sense. Like say there wasn't a stricture of it has to be 50. And so you couldn't say, well, we don't want to go to 105 to 106 because it's already non-conforming. We can't make it more non-conforming. If that number weren't there, would reasons for not wanting to go from 105 to 106 get you back to why there was a limit in the first place? I know that's a very philosophical thing, but like when we're talking about like, this is non-conforming. We don't want to make it nor more non-conforming, but that's like a letter of the law thing and the spirit of law. Like, as you said, the town plan is here, the regs haven't caught up to it yet. If the regs caught up to it yet, maybe 105 to 106 wouldn't be bad, or maybe it'd be bad for a different reason. And I'm more stating the problem than what I think a solution would be.
So using Tanglewood, using Tanglewood for that example, and Sharon will correct me in the numbers. But, you know, in, in the discussion, it was, it was, I think, like 125 existing, going to 129. And the discussion at the, at the board at that time was statistically, is there any difference in the number of trip ends that would be generated with, by adding four units to the, to the existing situation? And the determination of the board was that there was no statistical difference in 125 to 129, given the width of the road, given the existing, given the history of the area and so forth. So the waiver was granted at that time. And there were more units beyond then. And I know that was a continuing issue, but it doesn't answer the, it doesn't go back to answer, why was the, why was 50 the number?
Why was it 50?
You know, what was the, what was the criteria for?
Asking that question.
Right. Nobody seems to.
That was originally in the town plan, 50 units in one of the town plans. And in most, uh, states and, and communities, uh, it's, uh, there's more of a 30 home drop-off. But, uh, it was, it was in one of our town plans and then it got tra- it doesn't need to be a goal anymore because it got into the regulations. And I think that neighborhood has about 200 and something homes. And, uh, the homes on one street at the end weren't counted. There's like a 12, 13 more because weirdly it was a separate subdivision. And they also use, uh, Tanglewood Drive, the one exit to get out. But, but that, that's where, that's where that 50 came from. It was a safety issue and it was in, you know, it was probably four town plans ago. But I don't know how you would answer, what if that wasn't there? I mean, what if we didn't have any regs? Then we could just do whatever we want.
That would make our job really.
Yeah, I think.
Off with their heads.
That if, if that, if that came up and somebody was proposing 150 unit development of dead end road. Okay. That someone would raise that question. Oh, wait a minute. This is a problem. Okay, it's dead end. What are we going to do? We got emergency, okay? Give us some statistics. What are the, the statistics that say that once you get beyond a certain number, that you have to have a second access? Uh, and depending, again, using my, I want to say the absurd situation, is this a new road that's going down through a forested area? And, and in the first mile of it, there are no houses. Okay. And now this is where you house it, build at the end. Is there a higher probability for, for the road to get blocked because you've got real tall trees or not? Uh, what if you're going through a field and, and you've got the same situation? You know? So I think the circumstances are what have to be looked at. Uh, but I, I would say that, uh, there, there, there should be a number. Uh, but the number needs to be supported.
Right, which is really what I'm getting at.
Yeah. And, yeah. There, there's another significant example, and that's the, the Lang Farm, where there was an emergency exit plan from the beginning. And it was planned to be there, a second, a second entrance, egress primarily for, for emergency vehicles. But the neighborhood came together and said they didn't want it. So there was a lot of back and forth. And I don't know if that went through the town, uh, through the select board, remember? But there's a development that had a, had a second exit, um, planned.
Oh yeah. Technically speaking, once you get beyond the Inn at Essex, that is, that's one way.
And it's a very constricted point. I mean, with the, with the, with the circ and so forth. Anyway, so I mean, there's a, there's, there's a number of examples. So this is a, this is an item to be thought about. And maybe it's a, I don't know, it's a quality of the development, not quality. That's not the right term. It's conditions of the development that might be coming in play. Yeah, exactly. What, what, what's the situation? But you'd have to have a, a starting point. That's why I say, I think you have to have a number. And then, and then you could debate that number and so on.
Well, then there are, there are things that, that happened because when we're talking about the Tanglewood development, the development that I currently live in, um, which is sort of neighboring to it. Um, people had finished their basements. They had, you know, everything was fine. And then the Tanglewood development went in and all of a sudden basements were flooded. And, you know, so what do you do about that? Do you require that, you know, people?
Most of the flooding in that area happened after, after Alan Martin went in. The hydro, hydraulic conditions changed due to Alan Martin development, less Tanglewood.
Well, according to my neighbor who was the first one in the development, it was Tanglewood.
In that.
It might've been. It might have been homes. Combination.
I would say you're probably not gonna solve any of these issues.
We're not, what do you mean?
Not ever, but just this evening.
No, no, I absolutely agree.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I'm, I'm not saying this wasn't a good conversation, but it's, I, I think at this point.
Based on recent development reviews, the biggest hitters have been, probably the last six months have been slopes and buffers.
Right, and we have working groups on the PC for those very things, so that is, that is encouraging.
I, I do like that suggestion of someone said about having, and maybe, I think it was Stephanie, I'm not sure. Having, you know, a, a lead on each one of the, each section that says, here's the intent.
Yeah.
You know, without, without, you, you, you have to be careful there, of course, but still, uh, you know. What, what's, what's the spirit of this segment of the regulation?
I really like that approach because it gives you an option now of trying to figure out, well, if you can't meet it, what's a reasonable mitigation?
Yeah.
So, you know, if the purpose was a safety issue, well, then it's maybe a safety mitigation that you make. But if the purpose was something else, you at least have an idea about what, what a logical mitigation.
Informs waivers or varies, whatever you call them, when you say, okay, this can be addressed this particular way.
It also gives the developers an opportunity to, to look at what the, the point is behind the regulation. And free kind of plan for that, understanding that, well, it's clear that they don't want this because of this. So we need to make sure that our plans haven't captured.
Well, Stephanie was saying predictability for developers.
And we could go beyond that and have addendum case studies, this is, if you have worst case scenarios or best case scenarios of. An interpretive. Something insensitive.
Yeah.
Showing how something was.
That would be a great idea, yeah.
Negated by this and, and you provide some, you know, direct examiners.
Yep.
It's also, it's also a good reason to have accurate minutes so that if we have to look back to see what the intent is. Don't, don't smile like that, I can see that, um, but uh, you know, I don't mean, I don't mean a transcript. But you can look back at the minutes and see what, how they, how and why they decided to make the regulation what it was.
What did you think about the minutes that were with the timestamps?
I like, I love the timestamps, I think, I can tell it was AI because of the uh Roman numerate, numerals. And um, I think we could get rid of that and put the names in front of it, but I think, I think it was good, I love the timestamps. It, it's, it's tough though, if you're gonna summarize something, because sometimes you're gonna summarize what like went on and it's like a bunch of different minutes. So that might be difficult.
We've had some meetings that would be a challenge to summarize. I, I, my only last thing I would say is that it would be super helpful, I think, um, kind of seeing into the future. Uh, if planning commission were to kind of look at what the, the state's new regulations are around housing in particular. And how we wanna address that here in the town of Essex. Um, the, the example that we had about, um, about the development that was adding just like one more house. Um, which was a, as big a factor as far as the, the overall outcome. Um, but there was an issue that it was one more house than, than, than was already allowed within that development. The biggest portion of that, that we, that kept coming up also was that regulations now will allow on a lot of those properties to have additional dwelling units. And so how do we as a town wanna deal with that, because that will become a problem? And, and so, and not providing the DRB with the regulations around that would, will be a challenge for us.
Well, and it's also counterintuitive to the issue that we have of unaffordable housing. Because you start adding to the, the smaller houses that we have and all of a sudden they're not so affordable anymore.
Right.
Well, good show, everybody.
As, as Chair of the DRB, uh, in, in this particular, I'd like to thank you for, on behalf of the board, for allowing us to come and have this chat.
Our pleasure. Thank you for coming, yes.
Are you gonna take public input on this?
Very quickly, because this was intended as just a board to board.
It's a meeting. I think you're obligated to take public.
Go for it.
Maybe if you're sitting outside, I can, I can crystallize some of the noise I'm hearing and give you some suggestions. Um, the number of houses on a dead end street are clearly a sub risk factor from the fire department. I would think that, you know, you consult the fire department on that and that may change over time as building standards change, sprinklers and such. But it seems to me that that's one factor. The other one is energy, if you live on the tip of Lang Farms, if you wanna go with JP's, it's a long ride. But I would suggest that you take some input from the energy committee on what a recommendation might be on that regard. So that you have something that's a little more quantitative rather than just an arbitrary number has been, has been suggested. On the slope, I never hear anybody talk about twenty percent over what horizontal distance, that never seems to come up. I'm sure you must be thinking about it, it's obvious that a horizontal distance makes a difference if it's over twenty percent over ten feet, not a problem. Twenty feet, a little bit bigger, but still not a problem, when it starts to become a hundred feet, it becomes a significant issue.
I think actually I mentioned that.
Yeah, great.
Measure it with that, yeah.
So your trick here is, and you simply have to decide on what that distance should be, that's an engineering issue, is what can be mitigated with excavation and such. And of course, the second factor is the soils and I think somebody mentioned that, so specifying twenty percent over a specific horizontal distance. Given this soil type would be the thing you're shooting for, um, that's it.
Okay.
Yes.
Hi, Cheryl Van App. I'm from a neighborhood that has a lot of steep slopes. Um, I wanted to talk about the, some of the mitigation for the steep slopes with riprap. Um, I see some of our hills, uh, which were, you know, forested hills. Um, stripped, clear cut, and now we have riprap over it. So that, to me, that's a, it, it's a formidable for wildlife to traverse over it. And also, um, these sloped areas are uh on the banks of waterways. So um, I think of the breeding grounds for some of these critters. Um, it, it, riprap is basically destroying some of the environment that, um. That used to be there, um, we were talking about, you were talking about, um, uh, you wish you had. Uh, data to analyze, there is some data out there, it's not full, uh, fully complete. But there are the A and R maps. One indication is uh, the stability of this slope is the landslides that are occurring. Um, there, there's an, a, a layer that indicates the uh landslides. Uh, that have been reported and recorded, um, that can be used to uh. Look in, in the past can foretell what the future's gonna be, so that that information should be taken a look at. I'm hearing you talk about the greater than twenty percent slopes as far as like the, the, the. The width of the area, I guess. Um, also, I ask that you take into consideration the area surrounding the foundation of the homes. In my neighborhood, some of our homes are at the edge of a ravine. Um, so these slopes are right up to the house, right up to their foundations, creek is happening. And I, I would ask you to take into consideration of that and also how much of the house is surrounded by that slope. Um, you know, and that's what I'm seeing right now and I'm thinking with climate changing. We have the drought period and then we're followed by a, like a strong torrential downpour. That may affect some of this uh stability of the slope. Um, I would ask that you take that into consideration too, we really don't know what it's gonna look like in the next couple of decades. But the impact is on both the house owner and the town. Um, the house, obviously, the homeowners, the flooded basement, the fixing, the restabilization of their, their slopes. Uh, the town, we are having to pay, to repave these roads that lead to these houses. Uh, I would ask that you take into consideration that as justification. Um, uh, um, yeah, so that, that's what I wanted to raise and I hope you think of those.
Thank you. The cab.
Yes.
Yeah, I wondered what Trevor was doing. It's like this weird orb. Just crystal ball, he's trying to get our attention. We're good, um, other business?
No other business.
No other business, in which case.
I'll make a motion.
I'll take a motion, second. Moved by Ian, seconded by Dusty Elders in favor, if you say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting is adjourned at.